Are you ready?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Oh, yeah.
You just.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chris, come here.
Uh-huh. He told me he might not.
The. So.
Okay, at 7:31, I will call this meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wytham.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Daryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen. Councilmember Bruce Seeloff.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells. Councilmember Chris Weisenberg. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the March 19, 2024 City Council Agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the March 19, 2024 City Council Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with four yeas.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the city consent agenda for March 19, 2024 as presented.
Thank you.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the City Council Consent Agenda of March 19, 2024 as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. My voting has closed. The motion passes with four yeas.
All right. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside by Resolution Number 2C-96. It's a time for citizens to get up and talk to the City Council about things that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to address the City Council at this time? Just come forward, sign in, and tell us your name.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Reed Holmes. Several years ago, I kinda took the last penny of my savings and sort of risked it on a pretty beat-up abandoned property that was formerly the old Shopko or Pamida Building. And today, I just wanted to take a moment and thank you and the various departments of the city for your assistance in the development of the building into what it is today. Special thanks to the Fire Department with their help, Public Works, specifically Lou Iscano, Cody Dill, helping me with the myriad of questions I've had over the last several years. Believe it or not, that old abandoned building is now home to about 20 businesses, all of which are here to help carry their due weight in contributing to the various financial stresses of the city, I might add. But that being said, if it wasn't for the City Rawlins and the people in this room, it would probably still be an abandoned ISOR. Going forward over the next couple of years, I'm going to see what I can do to help out with a couple other ISORS near there. One is the private road that runs from, like where Deb's Espresso is, over past Subway towards Days Inn and then back out to Cedar. The other is a strip of dirt that kind of runs alongside my property. It's actually owned by the city. When it comes to the private ISOR, I'm going to try to work on over the next couple of years. I'm curious about the possibility of the street that runs in front of Walmart that then jumps over and runs in front of Burger King and Holiday Inn. It kind of stops, so I'm curious about that possibility of that continuing through to the area where, like Subway, Verizon sits at this time. Kind of like how over in front of Tractor Supply or Bongars, there's kind of a frontage road of sorts by those businesses. When it comes to the dirt strip ISOR, I'm going to try to work on that best I can, but I'm curious about that. I know it's owned by the city. I'm curious about it getting some development or, I don't know, anything really. I'm not sure what the possibilities are for it. I'm just thinking about it going forward. If you're at that light on the corner of the 287 bypass where Cedar and the bypass hit, if you're at that light looking south, you're at the busiest intersection in the county. Yet, when you stare south, you kind of see the dirt lot, the dusty dust bowl kind of a dirt lot, and that private road. I myself have put $4,000 or $5,000 into that dirt road over the last year or two to do what I can. It still looks pretty not great. It has the tendency to swallow small cars at times. Regardless of that, people like me try to go out there and do the best we can. We're not street professionals. I know Days Inn really struggles with their portion. They're doing the best they can, too. We work together with that. That private street, though, now does serve about 28 businesses total and should at least be considered as an important part of the community. Not to mention the thousands of passersby that sit at the busiest intersection in the county and look right at it. All that being said, I understand the extreme, like, difficulty and expense of such a massive idea and the cost of improving things like that, not to mention how long this thing, type of thing, takes if it were to even work out. I get all that. At this point, I just wanted to ask the mayor and City Councils, City Council members, and various members of the departments to be aware of the potential that there is right there for the city to sort of pop a little bit more in its appearance. I'm here to do what I can do. I only know what I know, but I can try to do the best I can do. If you guys have any helpful tips or information that would be valuable in the coming years as I attempt to work on it, please just keep me informed. Let me know. I'll go from there. Are there any questions for me about either the building, its development, or any of these things?
During this time, we just don't address the.
Understood.
The citizens, but somebody will be in touch.
Understood. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Reed. Is there anybody else that would like to address us at this time?
How are you guys this evening?
Good.
Good, good. Me and the wife and kids, we belong to this organization. It's called the Cowherd County Cowpokes. It's just a bunch of people that get together and go ride, ride horses and trying to get the kids.
Can you state your name for, so the secretary?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Hague. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Jeff.
And so, anyway, we're starting a nonprofit for the organization to make managing the club funds better and easier and more traceable and trackable and all that stuff, a little more accountability that way. On Easter, we were going to do a pony ride down there at Tractor Supply, and Dory's a member of the club. And so, we've got permission from Tractor Supply and all of that, but I wasn't sure if there was any permits we needed to get. We were thinking about maybe selling some cookies or brownies or something along those lines while we was down there. But I wasn't aware if we needed a permit or just the city's blessings. We're gonna, we've got a little sheet that everybody signs in on saying there's, you know, no responsibility. It's a no-fault kind of deal. You don't, you're right at your own risk kind of situation. And I just wasn't sure who to talk to about any of that, and so I thought I'd just come and address you guys and make sure I wasn't going to step on no toes.
Normally, we don't address.
I understand.
That's private property, but if there are any questions, call 328.
Okay.
4500. Take option three.
Okay.
I'll put you in touch with the city clerk and she'll hook you to the right people. To answer those questions.
Super. Well, I appreciate you guys' time, and you guys have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you. That's awesome.
Nice seeing you guys.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the Council at this time? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is City Council Reports and Ward Updates. Ward one is the word that I represent, and I don't have any updates on that at this moment. I also represent, or I'm on the Board of Cowherd County Council of Government. We haven't had a meeting since last time. There is a meeting tomorrow night in Saratoga, however, and so I'll give a report at the next meeting. And then the next item is B, and that is Board of Adjustments and Ward One Updates. Councilman Seeloff.
We still haven't had our meeting yet. We're just getting ready to, so until then, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. Urban Systems Committee and Ward Two Updates. Councilman Garner.
Urban Systems sent out some emails. I believe our meeting's coming up pretty soon. I was going to pull up the email, but my computer's still updating, so I can't remember what it said exactly. So, and then as far as Ward Two goes, just still, the road on Edinburg Street, just a big, that's kind of the hot one that comes up every week now, so.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Item E, which is DDA Main Street and Ward Three Update from Vice Mayor Sanger.
So, we have our Main Street National Convention is in Birmingham, Alabama. Beginning dates here shortly, we're setting up to go there. We were unable to travel last year, but they did roll over all of our fees and our airline fees and everything to be able to go this year, so we didn't have to spend any extra money. The Light Project, we're still working on trying to figure out what's going on with Spruce Street. And the last thing we're working on is the easement into the DDA Main Street building, which is now complete, between the DDA and the owner of 408. So, and then Ward Three Updates. Reed happens to live in my ward, though these buildings aren't in my ward, but Reed lives in my ward, so I have some answers to your questions. So, the land next to your building, I'm going to read just the last part because it's the only part that really matters. In that, "In the event the above-described land is no longer needed for public roadway purposes, that's the only way it can be used. Such land shall immediately revert to the Transportation Commission of Wyoming, YDOT." So, that goes back to them if we don't use it, and we can only use it for road. So, that's it. The other, the other two easements, the road that's in front of Burger King is actually a private road. It belongs to the company that owns all the land around Burger King. It's a Rawlins Hospitality LLC. And the road in front of Walmart is owned by the city. So, that's the three things that that covers. So, your roadway, all of that roadway, belongs to the businesses along that roadway. So, they're responsible for the maintenance of that road. So, that covers everything that I have from Ward Three.
Okay. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda then is Board of Adjustments Update to Council.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Shawna Roberts. I'm the vice chair of the Board of Adjustments. In 2023, the board met a total of six times. We've talked about a total of four variances being reviewed by the board. The board approved three of those four variances. The fourth applicant decided to meet the original variances for the setbacks on his building and just to build according to the variances. And then we had some workshops with planning and zoning over Title 19. Would you like specifics on the variances that we gave?
If they're significant.
There was a height variance for a pole barn in the Highlands Hills addition that was passed, a septic tank that was approved in an unplatted parcel of Deer Springs addition that was passed, a variance for a front porch on a side setback in Merrill addition that was passed. And then the one that was denied was a pole barn in the front yard of Park Hill addition. Do you want more?
I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No. Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your work. All right. Next thing on our agenda is the City Manager and Staff Report, so I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the Council. Tonight, to start off, I'm proud to announce that we've had a promotion from within the organization. We have promoted Nikki Howell to be our Recreation Director for the city, and that has, has already taken effect, but this is the first meeting that we've had to announce that, so if you see her, you can congratulate her on that. I've got some dates for Council to consider. We have three major projects going on. The first one, we started the comprehensive rate study throughout the, throughout the organization, the study of the rates. And at the April 2nd, at the next council meeting, we'll have a work session at 6 o'clock, and we will discuss the water and the sewer rates. So, we'll be able to bring that discussion that we had on the water and sewer forward with new information that we prepared, so that you know what that recommendation will be. And then we will ask for Council to consider passing the resolution with the rates on the 16th of April. And at that meeting, we will have a work session beforehand to review the different rates that we have discussed and the changes that we'd like to make. We've already gone over those at a work session, but we felt that a review was warranted at this point to go over those, and then we will ask for approval of those through the passing of a resolution. The second project that we have going on is our goals, our strategic plan. We've met, Council has met two different times to discuss the Council Goals throughout the city. And we still have two different columns on there that we need to discuss in Community Engagement Trust, and the last column was Community and Economic Development. So, what we would propose is a work session on May the 7th, and we will go over all of the goals and the different things that we have set, and then we will ask Council to consider passing or approving the strategic plan at the May 21 council meeting. And that way, we could bring those two, you know, that to a conclusion. The third item is the preliminary budget. And we are working through the Finance Department to put together a preliminary budget. So, we have met with department heads, and we have gone through all the different items for the preliminary budget. And we would like to present that to Council at a special council meeting on April the 11th. And then we would like a follow-up meeting on that on Saturday, April 13th, to discuss in more depth the presentation, the information that you will receive on the 11th. You know, to consider budgetary measures at that point. So, those are the dates. We, to go into the future, we propose that the first reading of the budget will be at a special council meeting on May the 15th. And at that point, we will have gone through the preliminary budget, made changes, and we feel that we will be prepared at that point to give the first reading of the budget. The second reading of the budget, we propose to be at the January 4 regular council meeting.
June?
June.
June the 4th, yeah.
Okay.
What did I say? June the 4th. All right. And then we would propose a special council meeting on June the 13th for the third and final reading of the budget. And then the budget is due June the 15th. It's when we have to have it to the states. So, those are the dates that we propose at this time. The last thing is, is we, as far as the landfill vouchers, we've discussed that with Council. And staff recommends that at this time that we do not do the free landfill voucher for this year that we're in. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any of your staff that wants to give reports?
I don't believe so at this time.
Okay. Do you have anything for us, Pranita?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Two small reports. The city today was served with a complaint by Rose Kane and Dirty Boys against the city. Legal has not had a chance to review and will respond appropriately. The city was also served with a complaint from John Hummel against the city, and the city is also working on that response.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next thing on our agenda is direction from City Council to City Manager. Does anybody have anything for that? Councilman Garner?
Council, I was curious if we should have Tom bring the salary study that we had done last year or the year before to us to review the job descriptions, because if, if we are to make any salary changes, I'd like to get ahead of that, and if we do have to approve the job descriptions, like I was discussing in one meeting, get ahead of that so that if we have, if that needs to be included in the budget, that's taken care of. That way, we can put that inside the budget coming up, so. Because I don't, I don't want that road block to still exist, because that sounds like that was the main reason it's never moved forward, so. If you could get them to us.
The, the salary study, I believe that we decided as a group to actually have that reviewed. And I don't think we've moved forward with that. So, I guess, direction would be for you, Tom, to seek a consultant. So I guess direction would be for you, Tom, to seek a consultant to work with us on that.
Are we, are we looking at just doing the whole salary study again?
If necessary.
I didn't, one last question. Do we have the minutes for the strategic plan work sessions yet? Have those been posted?
It's a work session, so there's no, there's no minutes.
I thought we took minutes though, right?
So I wasn't present.
No.
So there is no work session minutes, I don't think that's a work session.
I thought we had somebody taking minutes on this.
There were notes, but not necessarily minutes.
Okay.
Correct?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Garner, yes, we have some notes, and I would be happy to share my notes with you.
Okay.
That I took at that meeting.
Yeah, I missed that first, the first three hours of the one meeting. So that's, I would just like to get caught up on that.
I'm happy to share with you my notes on that.
Perfect.
I'll get it timed.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Seeing none, we will move on to new business. So it'll be the minutes of March 5th. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve March 5th, 2024 regular city council meeting minutes as approved.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the March 5th, 2024 city council, regular city council meeting minutes as approved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with three yays and one abstain. The one abstain was Councilmember Gardner.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of March 13th. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve the March 13th, 2024 special city council meeting minutes as approved.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the March 13th, 2024 special city council meeting minutes as approved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with four yays.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is Wyoming Association of Municipalities nominations for awards for 2024, if there are any. I would entertain a motion for that. Going twice, three times, okay, thank you. Moving on, we will move on to the next thing, which is Item D, which is approved selection of a CPA firm for the city audits, and I Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve Carver, Florick, and James CPAs to conduct the City of Rawlins, Wyoming audit for fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2025, and fiscal year 2026 for a total of $121,500 for audit services and $5,000 per year for single audit if necessary.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to move, seconded to approve Carver, Florick, and James CPA to conduct the City of Rawlins, Wyoming audits for years 2024, for years 2025, and years 2026 for a total of $125,500 for audit services and $5,000 per year for the single audit if necessary. Is there any discussion? And I would ask you, Tom, to speak to this if you would. Is that okay, Steve?
Yeah.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So the last four audits have been done by Atlas Advisors and CPAs under their contract, and it is the practice of the city after, after three years to put it out for bid. And this year, we received three different bids, which, which to me is a good sign that, you know, we have interest in firms in auditing us. We feel at this time that a change to Carver, Florick, and James would be beneficial to the city, references on them were very good. The only issue that we had with Atlas Advisors was just the timing. You know, we missed an audit date. And, you know, we just, we felt that timeliness was an issue, and we think that we can overcome that through a contract with Carver, Florick, and James, so.
Okay, are there any questions, comments? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with four yays.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve another contract. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to have the Finance Department recommend authorizing the City Council of City of Rawlins, Wyoming to approve the software licensing agreement with Software Solutions Inc. of Dayton, Ohio for implementation of a new integrated software system.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to have the Finance Department recommend authorizing the City Council of City of the City of Rawlins, Wyoming to approve the software licensing agreement with Software Solutions Incorporated of Dayton, Ohio for implementation of a new integrated software system. And again, I'll have you present that if you would, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Over the last year and a half, you know, since I've come to the city organization, we have looked into a lot of our processes. We've taken a really deep dive into what we do and why we do it and how to improve upon, upon what we do. And during that time, we've, you know, in a year and a half, we've been through four audits through the city because we got behind. We've been through two budgets, a comprehensive rate study, and all these things. And at the foundation of all of this is a financial information system. A financial information system is what drives the city. It's how we do our business, it's the processes that we use to perform our business, and it helps track the city's accountability to its goals. We're tracked through a financial system where we set our goals and see if we are obtaining those goals. And we feel like we're on the brink of great things at the city. I feel that our budgets are very close in our audits to receiving national recognition through the GFOA. I think that, you know, that we're moving in that direction, but we really feel at this time that we need to do an overhaul of our accounting processes, policies, which lead to a change in direction in our accounting system. Right now, I would say that all of our processes in the city are still driven by paper or by tracking through Excel, you know, the software program. Purchase requisitions, time sheets, a lot of the source documents are still paper-driven. We still turn in a paper time sheet that we sign. And we, we just haven't been able with the current system that we have to overcome that, to go electronic. And so we feel at this time that we just need a change in direction and an overhaul in our systems. So what we are recommending at this time is a contract with Software Solutions. Now, we went out and we put out an RFP. We demoed several software systems, five or six different systems. We looked at and we laid it out as to which one of these would better serve the city in helping us reach these goals that we have of going electronic. And we feel through the demonstrations, through the discussions that we've had with these different entities, that Software Solutions was the superior product that we saw. We felt that the integration, the functionality, the simplicity of the screens, we just felt that it was a superior product to the others that we have. And so we are recommending at this time, you know, that the, that the council approve this licensing agreement. We feel that we will make large strides in the city in every aspect of our financial system. We feel that we can increase our banking services with, you know, through positive pay, through repurchase accounts, sweep accounts, and the software allows us to do that. We feel that we can now track inventory, where right now, we do not track inventories in the city at the central garage or any of those areas. We feel that, that we can do that with the system. We feel that, that we could integrate at this time a time and attendance system that would interface with payroll. We feel that this would help us digitalize our employee files that are all maintained in paper, right now in a file cabinet that, you know. So we feel that, that this is warranted at this time and that this is the start of the process that we can have so that we can just maximize our staff's strengths and what they work and what they do and improve our processes. In order for this to work, we feel that we need to work on financial policy first. And if we don't have financial policy, we feel that the accountability piece isn't there. And so we want to do financial policy, which we believe will lead to procedures that will be integrated with the new software. And then we feel, once the software is set up, that it will definitely support our strategic plan, our budgets, and our audits. So we feel this is an improvement that we need at this time. So we thank you for your consideration of this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sanger?
What's the timeline on the implementation from policy writing to training to we go live? And now we're superstars.
And ideal time to go live, to jump at the end of it, would be January 1st of the year. So that way, we could do 1099s and W2s out of the current system. If not, we would have to move all that data from the old system into the new system. And so a logical timeline would be January 1st. And so with that, we would have two to three months to write policy, procedure to get that in front of council. And then that would be, we would think, you know, within that next six months would be a good time to set the system up, build the dictionaries. There will be a test system that we can run parallels to make sure that we're getting the same information. So we just believe with all of that, a good timeline would be procedure policy by June 30th in place. And then we feel that the training would go and building the system within the next six months to go live on January 1st. So preliminary timeline.
Okay. Did you have something, Councilman Garner?
I'm just curious, with CPU, I can't think of their company name. Does that include their time in this quote? Or, sorry, have we looked at what their cost is going to be to help with the implementation? Because I imagine they're going to have a huge involvement for a while there.
Sure, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Gardner. This is a cloud-based system, and so we are going to move away from the servers that we currently have, which is a big time commitment through the servers and loading. But, but no, we have not gotten yet with CPU on their role in this, because we felt with the cloud base that most of that time would be spent with trainers from Software Solutions.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none, please open online voting.
I'll just jump on my phone, it's okay.
Online voting is open.
Thank you.
Online voting is closed, the motion passes with four yays.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a submittal of a victim advocate grant. Councilman, Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move that we approve a submittal to the State of Wyoming Division of Victim Services, Victims Crime Act, Violence Against Women Act, known as VOCA or VOWA, grant for the City of Rawlins, Wyoming Police Department in the amount of $70,007.
Okay.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve a submittal of the State of Wyoming Division of Victim Services, Victim Crime Act, Violence Against Women Act, grant for the City of Rawlins and the Wyoming, for the Wyoming, City of Rawlins, Wyoming Police Department, sorry. I will, I will turn the floor over to you, Chief Ward, to explain what's going on here.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and City Council, Michael Ward with the Police Department. Excuse me, this is a grant that we apply for every two years. It's on a two-year cycle. The grant is administered through the Wyoming Division of Victim Services. It contains both federal and state money. On the off years, in between the years that we apply, we have to resubmit for money that's left over from the previous year to the state. We currently have one time, one full-time victim advocate coordinator, one full-time victim advocate, and one part-time victim advocate. The funds from this grant are used to pay the salaries and training of the, of one full-time advocate and the part-time advocate. The grant, under the VOCA section of it, does require a match from the city of 25%. This is covered by the salary of the full-time victim advocate coordinator. For example, last year, we received $27,573. The city was responsible for a quarter of that, 25% of that, which was less than $7,000, which is easily covered by her salary. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions.
Very familiar with that program. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, please open online voting, and thank you, Chief Ward.
Oh, one more thing, Your Honor, Your Honorable Mayor. The amount that I put down here, $70,007, was the amount that we received last year. We won't know how much money we get until we apply and we are awarded an amount. It could be slightly more, which is not likely. It could be the same, or it could be less.
Okay, but we're responsible for 25% of whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is usually easily covered by the salary of the victim coordinator.
We're going to pay that anyway.
Right.
Yep. Perfect. Vice Mayor Sanger?
So I need to change my motion? Put us on the 25%.
Probably, yeah, yep.
So I make a fundamentally motion that we change that to that we are covering 25% of whatever the grant is.
Of, of the VOCA portion of the grant. And last year's amount was $27,000, $27,573. We can assume it'd be similar for this year.
Do you accept that? Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Anything else? Anything else? Please open online voting. Thanks again, Chief Ward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with four yeas.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. The next item is, let me find it here. All right. Councilman Gardner, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I move to have the Finance Department recommend the City Council approve the resolution following the Finance Department, allowing the Finance Department to establish an account with Wyoming Governmental Investment Funds, WGIF, so that the current funds being held can be invested at higher interest rates.
Second.
There's a motion made in seconded to have the Finance Department recommend the City Council approve their resolution allowing the Finance Department to establish an account with Wyoming Governmental Investment Funds, so that the current funds being held can be invested at a higher interest rate. And the presenter is City Manager Tom Sarvey again, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The city currently has within its cash reserves for all funds roughly $40 million, and that includes, you know, general enterprise, all funds. And we only have roughly about $5 million of that in investment funds outside of the financial institutions in Rawlins. And so, we're looking for opportunities through these programs such as the Wyoming Governmental Investment Fund, to have opportunities to invest more of our, more of our cash reserves into accounts that have, like I said, higher interest rates than what we receive at the local banks. And so, the Wyoming Governmental Investment Fund, right now, their rates are about 5.5%. And I'm not sure, but it's less than that that we get, you know, within our accounts. Some of our accounts are non-interest bearing, even at the banks. And so, we just are looking for opportunities to invest these funds. And through part of our financial policy, we will bring a cash reserves policy that will outline how we will invest these funds, and, you know, how much, and if they're long-term, intermediate-term, short-term. We will bring that as a policy, but we are looking at this time to invest, some of those funds, start to migrate those funds into, you know, investment accounts.
Now, it's my understanding that this is not long-term. It can be put in one day, taken out the next, so it's still fluid, is that?
Correct. Yeah, they are still liquid funds.
Okay. Vice Mayor Sanger?
So, you'd said earlier in the meeting about how we sweep, sweep these funds out. When we approve a budget, most people think that, okay, you're starting with your $40 million, go ahead, go. No, actually, you're starting with whatever your income is for that month, and your outgoing is for that month. It's what's in between that sits and doesn't do anything, correct?
Correct.
So, can you explain what that sweep does with those funds right there that are not doing anything, they're just sitting right there? Funds come in, funds go out, but they transfer through this pile of money that's kind of sitting in place?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, Councilman Sanger. Currently, we do not use sweep accounts. That's one of the improvements that we would like to make with our new accounting system. So, right now, we have, within our checking accounts at the bank is just where this money resides. So, over time, where we have the inflows and the outflows, what's left has just remained in these accounts at the banks. We just haven't done anything with them. So, they just accumulated over time. And so, the system that we would like to install at the, at the local financial institution is what they would call a sweep or a repurchase account. So, what would happen is, is we would, we would set up a main account at the bank, and then attached to that account would be what they call zero balanced accounts. And so, we would set up accounts payable, payroll, as a zero balanced account. So, what would happen is, is that each day, as activity occurs, the checks that we write would go into those accounts, zero balanced accounts. And at the end of the day, whatever the main account has to send to the zero balanced account to zero it out, it actually transfers the money up, which would zero it, and take it out of the sweep account. And then, at the end of the day, there's a formula at the institutions to cover fees, there'd be a peg balance. And then, anything over that, on a daily basis, would be swept out of the bank into a money market account at the bank. And all of that occurs at the financial institution. So, what we would do within the finance office is monitor our cash flows, where we feel the cash is needed at certain times of the year, you know, where the cash flow changes. And we would like to take the excess out of the repurchase account and transfer that into either YO Star or into this new account with the Wyoming Governmental Investment Funds.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with four yeas.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda is an executive session. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to go into executive session at 8:22 PM per Wyoming Statute 164405A92, to consider or receive information classified as confidential by law, and to consider the appointment, employment right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer, unless the employer, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any and all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in the executive session.
Second.
A motion made to go into executive session at 8:22 PM. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with four yeas.
All right. Thank you.
Now, Steve, for clarification, I can take this one in back out.
All right. There's nothing in it that we need, that's?
No, it's just, just our structure.
Read. Where'd he go?
I haven't got it right, bud.
Oh, yes, I do. Okay, thanks.
Actually, I do want to, I do want to do one thing. Oh, yes.
Okay. One more than all. Yes.
I don't know that's.
Right.
I just want to make sure I'm giving you the feedback that you want.
It should be good.
Yeah. What's in this little room?
Um, it's a ladder with the doors.
Oh, did it go through the roof or to, uh, the terrace?
Something. This one just.
Oh.
But that's a lot.
All right, so it goes.
Go up.
Huh. Huh, interesting.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I moved to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen four four oh five, section A, nine and two at nine oh seven P M.
Go ahead, hear it second.
Second.
And a motion made in second to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, A, um, or in two at nine oh seven P M. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Is there any objections to matters discussed in executive session? Okay, uh, next motion is... Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of March fifth, twenty twenty four, regular city, uh, city council meeting as presented.
Second.
And a motion made in second to approve the executive session minutes of March fifth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Yay.
My voting is close, a motion passes with three DAs and one abstain, the one abstain was council member Gardner. Okay, thank you, this meeting is adjourned at nine oh nine, and our next meeting is April second, twenty twenty four, thank you all.
Are we having email issues again?
Not to my knowledge.
I don't, I just don't seem to get any emails, I mean, I'm, there's...
So, I have to talk to the C P tomorrow anyway, so I will make sure that I make it comment.